I think I have to wait technically until seven o'clock.
Yeah, I have six fifty-nine. You need a minute, I think.
Yeah, fifty-nine. We'll wait. I don't want to get foiled.
No. Who else is going to be joining tonight?
I, I would say Becker.
Becker probably talk about payroll.
Okay.
Seven. All right, we can start. All right, good evening. My name is John Matola, member of the Board of Finance, Chair of the Board of Finance Audit Subcommittee. It is just seven o'clock, Tuesday, September tenth. Welcome to the Board of Finance Audit Subcommittee Special Meeting. We have really two major items on the agenda. And so we'll go to the first one, number two, is presentation and discussion on audit reports with internal auditor Connie Saxel and discussion on future audit plan, internal audits. My understanding Connie, after looking at the backup, you have, I think, four audits that you've completed. So you're gonna run us through those and then after each one, we'll ask questions. And obviously, if someone has a question in the middle of it, feel free to interrupt at the appropriate time and ask your question. So I'll turn it over to you, Connie. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, John. Good evening, everyone, and it's always good to see you all. I hope you had a wonderful summer. Tonight, I'd like to discuss four audit reports that are stamped final this calendar year. The first is audit of revenue generated by the Town Plan and Zoning Department. The purpose of the audit was to ascertain reasonable assurance that all departmental revenues are properly collected and reported as to general ledger account on mountain period, review internal controls that are in place to ensure effective control over departmental revenue collections and recommend areas where improvements may be implemented within the department to strengthen internal controls. So during the audit, it was noted that a circa nineteen-sixties pre-numbered three-part carbon copy receipt machine was being used to manually record customer receipt data for all cash and check payments received by the department on a daily basis. Further, at the time of audit, it was noted that credit card as a method of customer payment for subdivisions, waivers, special permits, et cetera, other than online certificates of zoning compliance was not being utilized and thus not available to customers. All permits other than certificates of zoning compliance were paid by customers via cash or check only. Certificates of zoning compliance are done online through municity by the customer at the kiosk in town hall or at home. It was recommended in the audit that the Town Plan and Zoning Department utilize municity, the existing online permitting software, to its full advantage. This includes instituting a full integration of municity in the Town Plan and Zoning Department to include all plan reviews, permits, waivers, variances, et cetera, that are currently paid and processed using the manual customer receipt system. Internal audit follow-up to this report. The Town Plan and Zoning Department worked with the Information Technology Department to allow all permit types to be entered into municity. A permit number is now issued in municity when a customer fee is paid. All permits are now tracked through municity by a permit type, permit number, and fee paid. All permits can now be paid for by customers with a credit card through municity. Other streamlining of departmental operations and strengthening of internal controls now in effect as a result of the audit are a proper segregation of duties was established between the collection and depositing of customer receipts amongst employees within the department. One deposit transmittal is now prepared on a daily basis versus two transmittals prepared by separate individuals. A second receipt book that was previously maintained was eliminated for the recording of customer cash collections. Staff has now been notified to use greater care when processing customer receipts to ensure that they are complete and accurate. All daily customer collections of cash and checks received by the department are now properly secured and deposited on a timely basis. It was also proposed that the fee schedule in effect, January twenty eighteen, be reviewed to determine if it's in line with similar fees charged by comparable neighboring Connecticut towns. And per the Director of Plan and Zoning, the fees are within reasonable range of typical fees charged by other towns. All revenue collections from the audit sample tested were found to be properly deposited and recorded to the correct general ledger accounts in munis. Do you have any questions on that?
Anybody?
Uh, yeah, just a quick one as a point of clarification. And thank you, Connie, for the summary. I read Jim.
You're breaking up.
Sorry, can you hear me? All right, I read Jim Went's response to the audit report. And can you hear me?
Okay. Now I can, yes, now I can. Sorry, you were breaking up.
Okay, so I read Jim Went's response to the audit report and I give him our thanks for that. It was, I appreciate his response. It was comprehensive and seemed to address everything. Can you just clarify? If all of the, so it sounds from his response that all of the recommendations were implemented, is that?
We have a problem. Unfortunately, you're breaking up. You keep breaking. I don't know if it's my internet or if it's the Zoom, unfortunately.
Can the others hear me or no?
We were doing fine up until.
I can hear you.
I can hear you, Lori.
I can hear Connie and I can hear Lori.
Okay.
So most technology. I hear both.
Connie, can you call in?
Unfortunately.
Why don't you log out and log back in, maybe?
Now let me see.
Let me center a note here.
You think so?
Or switch to phone, yeah, for the audio portion, because your video is fine.
I'll try to call in, okay. Okay. I guess I need a phone. How do I? Is there a phone number to call in? I guess that's the other.
Yep.
Oh, I guess I go in. Oh, why don't?
Yeah, it's on the agenda, I believe. From reading Jim Went's response, that all the recommendations have been implemented. Is that fair?
That is correct.
All right, and right now, the process has, and he seems to say that initially, they weren't using the system for all permit types because they were piloting one type, but now he's got everything in municity. And they're still using this paper, you know, three-part paper process to issue receipts to customers, but everything else, everything is nonetheless captured in the system.
That is correct, yes.
All right, well, I didn't, that was all I just wanted to clarify. And please thank him on our behalf for the comprehensive response. It was well done and thank you for doing that audit.
I will do that, yes. The Plan and Zoning Department was a very good department to work with. They were very receptive to all the recommendations and changes and immediately implemented the recommendations made within the report. So I was very pleased with that.
Good, okay.
Any, any other questions?
No. Hey Connie, can you just do me a favor? Can you do the, as I'm looking at the packet? Can you, in a certain order, can you do the the follow-up ODM, Off Duty Management, one next?
Yes, of course.
Thanks.
Before you go on there, could I just have a follow-up on the?
All right, Mary, go ahead, yeah.
And that is, why do they still need the three-part receipts? Aren't they able to print a receipt from the system?
Well, it's my under, it's my understanding that I did discuss that with the department head, Mr. Went. And he said there are times when customers pay with cash or check, primarily check at the counter, and sometimes if the staff is busy or no one is able to enter it into the permitting system, they will write the customer an immediate receipt so they can be on their way. And then later, the information is input into the municity system.
Okay, so is there some reconciliation of those two systems then? Or because it's?
Uh, well, at the end of the day, there is an end-of-day customer report. And no customer receives a permit unless there is payment made. So every permit that is issued is in numerical sequence. There's an associated customer receipt with that. And a corresponding deposit into the bank as well.
Okay, so is the receipt number entered into munis, munis, I don't know the software's name, but?
Yeah, yeah, municity. Um, no, the receipt is not, I don't believe the receipt number is entered into municity. However, other information, the customer's check number, method of payment, who paid the permit number and all the other information is present in municity. So if you, if I look at a, the reports, it will give me in numerical sequence every permit that was issued and every permit will have a corresponding revenue, a cash or check or a credit card payment associated with it.
Okay, it's just that what if a person pays cash, gets a receipt, and then it's not entered into the system? So?
Well, then they wouldn't get a permit. Well, yeah, then they wouldn't, would not ever receive a permit.
Okay.
Because it wouldn't be in municity then. They wouldn't be able to enter into munis, municity because municity would automatically apply the permit number.
Okay. Got it, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll move on to, thanks, John. I'll move on to the follow-up of ODM, Off Duty Management Electronic File Interface Integration with Munis Payroll. Okay, the purpose of this audit was to ensure that weekly off-duty management, also known as ODM, electronic files are properly interfaced into Munis payroll system for outside services rendered. By police, I'm sorry, there's actually an echo on my iPad that is coming back into my, to me, but that's, I hope it's not bothering anyone else. Okay, so this is for outside services rendered by police officers. And that the correct employees are paid for the correct number of hours worked and at the correct rate of pay. The audit was also to ensure that the town is properly compensated each week by ODM in accordance with contracted rates between the two parties for police personnel hours worked per outside job type and that the correct amounts are properly deposited into the general fund bank account according to ODM reports submitted to the town. And it was to ensure that deposit transmittals are properly submitted to finance by the police department for the correct period amount and correct general ledger accounts on a timely basis to ensure that the totals for deposit transmittals submitted to finance are supported by ODM reports for the correct amounts. It was noted during the audit that ODM electronic files are properly interfaced into Munis payroll for all employee hours sampled, hours reported on ODM electronic files properly corresponded to total number of hours paid per respective employee as reported on Munis detailed payroll check registers without exception. All bank deposits were properly made by ODM via ACH wire into the general fund bank account on a timely basis. Amounts per ODM reports were traced to deposit transmittals submitted by the police department to finance and were found to be properly entered into munis for the correct period, general ledger accounts, and amounts. Internal audit recalculated overtime rates of pay for a sample of employees who worked outside jobs. It was noted that eight employees, or nineteen percent of the audit sample tested, were not paid the correct hourly overtime rate of pay, resulting in overpayments and underpayments in payroll. Some of the overtime rate errors were the result of the failure to apply the proper step increase to the employee in munis by Human Resources. The town is currently undergoing a switch from munis payroll to an outsourced payroll processing vendor called Paycom. Future payroll audits will be conducted after the new system is implemented. Do you have any questions?
Go Lori.
Thank you, Connie.
You're welcome.
So a couple, couple of questions. It looks like from reading the report that the overpayments and underpayments were corrected for those employees.
Yes.
At least ones that were identified, the ones that were identified in your audit. Um, you have to assume that if a sample had nineteen percent of them coming up as incorrect, that that should, is somewhat indicative of what what the unsampled population is, is doing as well, right? So was there any?
Yes.
Follow-up by HR or anyone to look at the, whether there were additional errors that needed to be corrected similar to these that you identified?
Um, I'm not aware if HR did any further reviews or test work to ensure that all employees were receiving the correct rates of pay. Um, I do know that we had several meetings and we discussed how we could possibly prevent future problems and also to correct possible problems going forward. Now, with the implementation of Paycom, we're assuming that from Human Resources, they tell me that this will help prevent future payroll and errors and discrepancies as they feel that munis is cumbersome and difficult to navigate. So that we basically left it as it is at this point.
Okay, maybe you, can you just maybe get back to us on that and, because it looks like a couple of the individuals during this month that you looked at had identified the discrepancies on their own and had come forth. Somebody paid, you know, voluntarily paid an amount back. Somebody else asked to be paid the right amount. Others maybe didn't notice, but they were made whole, but that's only this small number of employees who were uh, you know, identified during this month. So that, it would just be helpful to know. I, I guess my overall takeaway in reviewing this report is I really, I really didn't walk away with a clear understanding of the root cause. Um, we say munis is complicated. There was one statement in here and I, it's on the second page of the HR response. It's part of the email from Peter Ritchie. And it's under Audit Finding and Recommendations Number Three. Um, it's his, it's his second point and he basically says there that munis is complicated. The system configurations currently in place were in place before this HR team was hired. Overtime is automatically calculated based on the collective bargaining requirements and updates for overtime calculations can't be manually adjusted. So that seems odd. I don't know if that's, because if, if that's the case, I don't know how any of the shift differentials would have been done correctly. But that's the only thing I read here that seems to get at root cause. You know, I can appreciate that maybe munis is complicated, but the reason I'm asking is that um, I'm not sure how this gets fixed by Paycom if we don't really understand what's going wrong. Was it a training issue with the individual in HR? Was it a communications issue between the police department and HR somehow correct shift differentials and college credits and those things were not being reflected correctly in munis? Um, those same things are going to have to get into Paycom somehow.
Right.
And so I'm not clear how Paycom is going to fix the problem if the problem seems to be that the input was incorrect, because you know, things can be incorrect. Input incorrectly into Paycom as well. So can you, in, in all the discussions you have, can you maybe shed some light on root cause as you understood it for these?
Right, um, well, there, there are a lot of moving, right, now, there are a lot of moving factors related to the discrepancies in the rates. Number one, training. You have to have proper training and the individual has to understand how to utilize the payroll system. Number two, the shift differential rates change every quarter or so. You have, the employee needs to know how to input those shift differential rates properly and correctly. Uh, number three, start dates of hire and such need to be entered, properly entered, otherwise the longevity steps for the individuals won't be applied to the employee. And so there, there's a lot of moving parts, so if the administrative staff does not understand how to utilize it, obviously it's not going to perform correctly. And the same issues, I believe, in my opinion, will continue to happen in Paycom because you're going to have to somehow notify Paycom of the shift differential rates, the correct starting and higher dates and et cetera, and the correct college incentive pays and so forth.
So, and, and I don't know if you know the answer to this or not, but the process in Paycom is, will the information be simply communicated to them or, or is it a situation where somebody in HR is going to have to input it as they're doing now and then it gets transmitted to Paycom? Because again, I'm, I'm not, I, I just, I'm just, I'm not clear on how we're going to fix this, this input issue by implementing a new system.
Right.
I mean, I don't know what the Paycom process is. Maybe the process is easier and the process enables some more error-free uh, input, but may, and you don't have to answer that right now, but maybe if you could get back to us on that because I, you know, we could end up with a a new system that's perhaps much more efficient. I assume it will be more efficient, but in terms of accuracy, you know, if this is a known item that we've been getting wrong and been getting wrong at, you know, somewhat frequently, then we just have to make sure we have processes around that in the new system to get it right. So maybe, maybe just get back to us on that item?
Okay, I will check with Human Resources on that.
Um, okay, and I yeah, I didn't have any other, um, I didn't have any other questions on this one.
Good question, Lori.
Yes.
Um, oh, sorry, John. Um, yeah, the, um, this wasn't part of Joe Centafani's review, right? I don't recall seeing this before, but was, was it in that report?
I believe it was addressed. I, I think we had heard, I think he, he may have addressed it generically. We didn't ask him to, to look at this as, as a separate item, but I, I know that he made reference to, um, you know, errors as a result of input errors and pay rates and things like that, so.
But, and I just want to make sure that I understand that the, um, the rates pertain to just paying people like during regular payroll, if their regular payroll rates are entered properly, then the outsourced payroll, uh, um, rates, what we're charging should also, if the formula is correct, be, be proper as well. So does this mean that the regular payroll was not done properly?
No, their base salary, their regular weekly pay were correct. Their overtime rate is based on shift differential, which calculates into an overtime rate. And if your shift differential is incorrect, then your overtime rate will be incorrect. In some cases, uh, the step increase was not properly applied, so that meant the person was entitled to a higher pay and therefore that, that weekly pay was incorrect. But anyone whose step was proper and correct in the payroll system in munis received a proper and correct weekly pay. It was the overtime on many cases that were, were wrong.
But the overtime's not just a, or then the shift differential, that's not a formula based off of their regular pay?
Yes, yes, it is a formula. It's based off of your base hourly rate plus your shift differential plus your college incentive times one point five and you get your overtime rate.
Yes, that's what I was wondering if for most of those, it, it, I mean, I guess if the multiplier was wrong, that's one thing, but if, if it was incorrect because they step or the, um, their, their degrees and things like that, their, their, their regular payroll would be wrong too, right?
Um, well, their regular payroll would be correct.
No, you're, you're talking.
Unless this shift differential, unless their step increase was not applied.
But, but, but I, I think as Bill's saying, regular payroll is in not just the outside jobs, but if the rate, the blended rate is incorrect in the system, then they work more than forty hours a week. They, they pick up an extra overtime shift that has nothing to do with,
Outside.
Well, yeah, outside jobs, right, just a normal, then their blended rate in munis is, is also wrong? Is that what you're going with, Bill? It's not the, it's not the forty, it's not their normal shift schedule. It's everything they do outside of it, which maybe not the captains or above, but most have some element each week, different overtime opportunities within the department and then you get.
Right, any, any overtime related to the employee would be incorrect if the incorrect shift differential rate and incorrect college incentive pay was applied to the employee, regardless if it was outside services or if it was
Plus your shift differential, plus your college incentive times one point five and you get your overtime rate.
Yes, that's what I was wondering if for most of those. I mean, I guess if the multiplier was wrong, that's one thing, but if if it was incorrect because. They step or the um s- their their degrees and things like that, their 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 regular payroll would be wrong too, right?
Um, well, their regular payroll would be correct. Shift differential, uh unless their step increase was not applied.
But but when I I think it's Bill saying regular payroll is in not just the outside jobs, but if the rate, the blended rate is incorrect in the system. Then they work more than forty hours a week. They they pick up an extra overtime shift that has nothing to do with.
Outside.
Well, yeah, outside jobs, right? Just a normal, then their blended rate in munis is 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 also wrong. Uh, is that what you're going with though? It's not the, it's not the forty, it's not their normal s- shift schedule. It's everything they do outside of it, which. Maybe not the the captains or or above, but most have some element each week, different overtime opportunities within the department, and then you get.
Right, any any overtime related to the employee would be incorrect. If the incorrect shift differential rate and incorrect college incentive pay was. Applied to the employee, regardless if it was outside. Services or if it was any regular overtime, other types of overtime related to police work.
And and just to put a point on it, so your report only deals with outside jobs, but you say here that in October, October of twenty twenty three. You know, ninety-three employees were paid for police uh outside jobs. That's, that's the majority of the department.
Yes, they all have an opportunity to.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't recall how many, how many officers we have, but in that month. Just for outside jobs, it's like virtually everybody got paid overtime at some level. And then to David's point. They're getting, I'm sure they have overtime on uh other duties that are not out.
Yes.
Side jobs, so it it's a pervasive issue regardless of how how much um the error is or whatever. If we're not getting overtime right for individual people. You know, that that has the effect of being able to impact almost everyone because almost everyone's earning overtime at some level.
I mean, they're, I mean, to be open, I mean, they're in the middle of dealing with that issue now. I mean, they're coming to a conclusion on resolving right before another quarter starts of. Issues with shift differential and and calculations for, you know, a significant amount of the department and. So if you don't get it right, the problem actually, uh it compounds, cause if you don't get it right at the very beginning, to your point, Lori, about ninety-three people, right? I mean, it's, it affects just about everybody. And if you don't get it right. It becomes a massive retro, which then creates more work, which then bogs everyone down, then it delays so everybody in every week by week, it just. Sort of compounds out too. So this, it is a pervasive issue. It's, it's. It goes on on a regular basis. Um, P D more than, there's an element of it in F D, but usually it's a very small group. Cause they don't have very many that have shift differential. Um, it's just some, a handful of staff that works, you know, in the offices. Um, but on um, on the police side, there there is, you know, to your to your points, most of the department in each interval.
Well, yeah, all the more reason to just, and and Connie, again, I don't wanna, you know, beat a dead horse. Just to make sure we do understand the root cause and we've got that fixed because, you know, so that we make sure we get it right in Paycom. Um, and again, hopefully Paycom is, the input is easier. Um, I understand that munis, from what little I understand of it, has multiple steps and screens and, you know, if you don't do all the. Um, input correctly, um, it can foul up everything. So I I hope that's alleviated under Paycom, but. Um, seems to me we just have to, you know, figure out how to. How to fix the input. And I I appreciate the recommendations here, but the recommendations mostly go to having somebody review these things after the fact. Or review it every six months. And I think that's certainly appropriate and necessary when you've identified. Kinds of errors, but um. I'm not sure we've got to the piece of fixing how we get the input correctly upfront, so. Um, you know, that should, that should be in my mind a um. You know, one of the. You know, one of the work streams on Paycom is to just look at that and make sure we've, we've got, got a process around that.
Okay, thank you. Connie, can you do the one? The next one is the credit card one?
Yes.
And and just for the sort of clear about this, you, you looked at three-month period covering September through November twenty twenty-three, right?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure, so, all right, go ahead.
Okay, this audit is a review of employee credit card expenditures and compliance to credit card policies and procedures. The purpose of the audit was to review and evaluate internal controls surrounding employee credit card purchases. Sample purchases from September twenty twenty-three through November twenty twenty-three, American Express billing statements. Were examined to determine if cardholders and department heads received the proper training. Surrounding credit card policies and procedures. Cardholders are following town policy by submitting the correct and required supporting backup documentation to finance. Cardholders are obtaining the correct approvals from their department head supervisors or chief fiscal officer prior to processing. Purchases were for authorized departmental purchases. Goods are ordered by employees that are within charter bid bidding and purchasing guidelines. Purchases are reviewed and approved by an independent um, by the independent authority other than the department head. Or CFO for conformance to town policy and to identify weaknesses among internal accounting control structure. At the time of audit in November twenty twenty-three, there were thirty-eight town employees who were cardholders. This was down from fifty-four in September of twenty twenty-three. A recent review of the August thirteen twenty twenty-four American Express billing. Now shows thirty-three active cardholders on the town side. Several credit card training sessions were held by human resources from July twenty-three through September twenty twenty-three. It was noted that not all active cardholders, including accounts payable, had attended the required training session. And no further credit card training sessions have been conducted since September twenty twenty-three. To date, there are four active cardholders who are still, have never received training. Accounts payable at the time of audit was designated by human resources to be the employee responsible. For reviewing credit card purchase supporting documentation. Per the human resources PowerPoint presentation provided at training. If the credit card submission meets town credit card usage policy, accounts payable processes, processes the reconciliation voucher package. However, the accounts payable employee had not been notified by human resources of the assigned requirements or duty. At the time of audit and after the town credit card training. A variety of non-compliance issues with the town credit card policy related to cardholder reconciliation voucher packages were noted. The old voucher form prior to update and revision at the training session was still being implemented. The voucher package examined was not signed by the department head. The voucher package was not signed by the cardholder. The CFO did not sign off on the voucher packages. The required credit card checklist was not signed by the cardholder or the department head. The required meals and meeting form was not submitted. As follow-up, an employee in finance now reviews employee credit card reconciliation voucher packages for missing receipts. Correct general ledger account allocation and verifies that the required forms are properly completed. And submitted to finance by cardholders prior to processing the voucher package into munis. Further, in January twenty twenty-four, finance sent all required forms to administrative staff in each department. Who pre- prepare the credit card voucher packages for their information and use. There currently, however, is no other independent authority. Other than the department head or CFO who reviews the detail, such as invoices and sales receipts. Of actual credit card purchases made by cardholders. Yeah. Much better. I recommend that the purchasing department review. Sorry, this, this is a, the Zoom meeting is. It's really coming back at me. All right, we're just gonna do it by phone. Much better. I recommend that the purchasing department review the vendors used. Quantities and types of expenditures made with town employee credit cards. To determine the reasonableness, best pricing and compliance to town purchasing policies and guidelines. The travel and meeting policy at the time of audit needed to be updated to reflect the new mileage rate by human resources. This still needs to be done. Animal control. At time of audit was making regular monthly purchases at Stop and Shop and was paying sales tax for department pet food supplies. Some pet food purchases are still currently being made at Stop and Shop, but sales tax is not being paid by the cardholder. Purchasing was notified of this and they're working with animal control to secure better prices, pricing. Through bulk purchasing with an approved vendor at reduced cost. Per the audit recommendation, the American Express voucher packages are now scanned into munis by the finance department. For permanent record retention and for ease of review of backup supporting documentation. The American Express reconciliation voucher form is still not available to employees in PDF syllable format as recommended. Additional internal audit follow-up to this report, a follow-up audit review of June twenty twenty-four AMEX compliance. With town credit card policy was conducted. A sample of American Express reconciliation voucher packages was examined. It was noted that the proper forms were being submitted to finance for processing by cardholders. The required forms were reviewed and approved by the appropriate authorities. It was noted during the audit review of invoices that one cardholder, however, did pay sales tax at the Home Depot. In the amount of eight dollars and eighty-one cents, the employee and the purchasing department were both notified via email. Of the requirements of town policy and the town tax exempt status. Do you have any questions on the credit card audit?
Go ahead, Lori. There's a lot there.
Yeah, th- there is a lot there, Connie. Um. And so you did this, so just, just to step back, so you, the first period that you looked at. Uh, which ended, I guess, September, October.
November.
November. Of twenty twenty-three. Um, so you, that period was selected because that was immediately after the credit card investigation and the new training was supposedly rolled out. And so you.
Yes.
Did, you looked at that period to see if after the training things were working.
Right, exactly. I wanted to see, yes.
Yeah, so they were not.
Yes, I I reviewed it, right, right. And it's.
And let me just.
Immediately after the training, the the incorrect uh documentation was still presented. People weren't signing it, you know, and so on and so on. However, finance, um, the accounts payable employee who was assigned to look at these. Reconciliation voucher packages was not aware that she had been assigned these duties and responsibility to be reviewing these packages. Now, this is occurring.
Let me just finish asking my question, cause this is where I I, this is where I'm really kind of scratching my head, so. Yeah, so in that review through November twenty twenty-three, you said eighty-seven percent of the population tested kind of failed in terms of compliance. So clearly.
Yes.
You know, we, and let me just, you know, we did this, we had a nine-month investigation. Uh, we had training theoretically, which apparently a lot of employees uh didn't go to. Um, and we still had a lot of issues, which um, I miss the fact. I miss this from reading the backup, but it sounds like a lot of this was corrected based on what you looked at June twenty twenty-four. I do just wanna make the point. You know, the training bothers me. Um, don't the uh credit cardholders sign an M O U? Um, indicating their understanding of all the policies? And did they have to certify or were they asked to certify whether they had attended training?
Um, they did not certify that they attended training, but they do sign an M O U uh governing. Credit card policies and procedures.
Okay, so they signed their M O U, but we still had that non-compliance, okay.
Laurie, did they sign the new M O Us based on the new policy or just an M O U that they signed? Five to six, seven, eight years ago, based on the old policy?
Um, I'm not sure, John. I'd have to check on that.
I remember M O Us, Laurie, being, you know, years ago, so that's something.
I don't think it was years ago. I remember seeing a new one that H R, when we got the report on the credit card investigation. I know there was a new one issued by H R, which I thought everybody was supposed to sign. The other thing that bothers me is the notion that H R didn't tell. Um, accounts payable that they were responsible for reviewing the um. Voucher packages. That is, makes no sense to me because first of all. Um, the finance leader at the time, our former CFO. Was the person that created these new policies um with the input of our outside auditor. And accounts payable reports to him. And one of the major uh changes or recommendations in that policy that was presented to our board. Um, as a best practice in fixing all these issues. Was that he was personally, he, the CFO, was supposed to be signing off on all department head expenditures. And accounts payable was supposed to be reviewing compliance for um. For all other employees. So I, I, I really have to push back a little that it was somehow H R's responsibility to tell. Um, someone in accounts payable what their responsibilities were here, because the finance leader created. And was responsible for implementing these policies. And he was the one who presented them to us, so that is truly mind-boggling. Um, I'm again glad to hear that in June. Uh, there was just that one minor item and that, you know, people were.
Complying, yes.
Complying and that, uh, you know, that everything was getting reviewed because, you know, I said this. Countless times during the credit card audit, but I'm. You know, I'm less, I was less concerned about what was getting through. Accounts payable on credit cards than, you know, everything else we pay, because if we don't have a function in accounts payable for making sure that. Um, you know, bills are in compliance before we pay them, yeah, there's a lot more money that goes through accounts payable beyond these credit card. Um, payments, so. I'm not really sure what to think here, um, other than it sounds like um, as of June. Uh, this, this got cleaned up. I mean, is that a fair assessment?
Yes, it is, that is a fair assessment. Um, the only thing is there is nobody else other than the department head and the CFO. Who reviews department heads who are credit card holders um of the types of purchases. The number of uh items being purchases purchased, the vendors being used, that sort of thing. Are we using, are we, are. Uh, purchasing, I believe gets the monthly credit card statement. From American Express, but they don't see the detail behind it. So are we using best purchasing practices? Can we buy, be buying things in bulk? You know, that sort of thing. There's, there's nobody else reviewing it other than the department head who looks at it. Signs off on their um employees' credit card purchases and it comes to finance and it gets processed. If the appropriate paperwork is present and the appropriate signatories are present on the, on the paperwork. So that, that's the only thing that I can add to that.
Is that out of comply, I can't recall. And the policy was purchasing, supposed to be doing that and they're not complying? Or are you making a new recommendation?
No, I'm I'm ma- I'm making that recommendation, that purchasing, that is not in the policy, no.
So, a- and and I I just wanna, if I could touch on that for a second, um, John, that's fine. So, one thing that's, that's also kind of come up here, it's not credit card specific, but it is a controls issue, um, and certainly tied to purchasing. Um, credit cards typically being smaller, there are waivers, if, you know, if it, if it's over a thousand, I I have to, you know, there's a few stops on the approval. Um, and I'm one of them, but um, the, the pink vouchers, um, which. Um. You know, the pink vouchers piece, um, you know, they have no visibility in purchasing on that, so I think there's things that we're finding, the credit cards. I mean, to Connie's point and, you know, I, you know, I always put in the recommendation to consider um, what to do there. Maybe there's a threshold related. Or something along those lines. Um, but um, but but there's other items that don't, that purchasing doesn't see that can actually. Credit cards are not necessarily, cause of the thousand dollar, you know, limit without approval, also by purchasing, I mean. Um, typically would be, would would be smaller. I guess. My, you know, so my point is there's, there's systemically, there's things that purchasing just never sees that we're looking at, trying to put some, some amount of visibility to purchasing on. So if you have a pink voucher, they're not a signer on it, right? So a pink voucher um, doesn't go through the P O process. There's a variety of different reasons why. Um, it's, it's all paper. Um, it does get, you know, scanned and put into munis. Um, but uh, the budget director signs off. If it's over twenty-five hundred, I sign off. It requires department head sign off. And it usually requires at least one, sometimes two employees um, within that department. So there's a bunch of different pieces. But it, but but, I, I, you know, I I brought something down, cause I had a question on. But it, but but I, you know, I, I brought something down because I had a question on a pink voucher to purchasing and like they. They looked at it and, you know, the buyers had never seen this before, right? So it sort of had heard of them existing. And my question actually at the time was, it was a larger item and it went through and it made perfect sense, but I said, well, wait a minute. How do you know, you know, okay, you know, th- there was this one through a pink voucher and a month later, another thing went through a pink voucher. And in totality, you've used a vendor enough times that you should have, you should have just bid the vendor. And in the instance that I did, it just, you know, I, just so you know, that then there was, i- it had to do with a timing issue. And it turned out that, you know, there was a properly vetted on that particular item I had the question on, but that doesn't mean tomorrow that there's not. So I think that we need to kind of, you know, look at that as well. That's it, that's an item that we're aware of. And I'm, I'm in active discussion with Adam on a few things. Um and we can add the, the credit card and purchasing and maybe best practices on that, but pink vouchers is one. Um and another item that I'm in, in discussion with him on is when the CFO or per, there's a timing in, in munis. On certain types of um, like certain, certain department um and CFO or purchasing sign off on items. And sort of I look at it like, and we were looking at it differently, I was looking at it going, I want to make sure that before I sign off that it's got the right. Um, you know, it's got a bid or, or GSA or state, you know, some sort of piece. Adam's sort of like, oh, I thought you were signing off from a financial perspective, then it comes to me afterwards and I sign off that purchasing is blessed. And I'm like, well, I don't really want to sign off unless I know that it's gone through all those other items. Because, you know, it's like, I, I view sort of CFO as like a last stop on some of these items. So they've started to now actually include more information and we're looking at maybe mechanically like a workflow change or something like that in munis. So it's a little bit more detail, but these are items, this is one of several different things that, you know, you want to make sure the right people have in the right time they're reviewing. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I wonder if, um, would it be possible to? Uh get, because, and David, I really appreciate everything you just said there. Um I have to tell you, when I read the um, and I realize these are old, so. But I, I read the responses to the audit recommendations. Um and they didn't seem to reflect. What you just said, um I, it sounds like some things have happened since then and you guys are, are still working on it. But the response I, I read, I thought frankly was a little troubling. It seemed to be pushing back on the, the recommendations and the policy itself versus um. Giving any kind of explanation with why the compliance hadn't happened, so. Between that and what's happened, because apparently some things have happened between then and June, which have gotten changed. And what you just said about the pink vouchers, maybe for our next meeting, would it be possible to just provide a, an amended update? To this report so that we can understand, you know, everything that happened? I mean, it doesn't have to be novel, but I just, if I, if I read what's in the public record here. You know, the response from finances is that, you know, we don't think it should be our job to do this. And, you know, meanwhile, it was, it, these were finance recommendations that were implemented, so it really doesn't make a lot of sense to leave it as it is. Um clearly, something's happened since then, so if, if you could. You know, maybe just have a quick update so that we can have clarity on, on what was actually done. And how these issues were resolved and any remaining items that need to be looked at, that would be great.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I can, I can absolutely do that. I mean, just from a timing issue, um some, these are sort of those last ones that really are from the prior. So, so I've kind of been cautious to, you know, to, to, to do much on, on that end, just because it's sort of the window of the timing of it. But as a, as a, like an addendum response to it from, from current, um, you know, I, you know.
Goes to the full board of finance, because all these Connie will do the report to the full board of finance at some point, so before this goes to them. It would really be good, I think, to have an, an addendum updating um. You know, what this administration has done and, you know, um we're kind of coming out clearly where we stand at this point. Again, real, realizing that these are not big dollars, especially since the number of credit cards has declined um in the scheme of things. But they are pervasive issues with how we pay for things in this town, so I think it's important. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mary, you got anything?
Um just quickly is, when Connie comes back to the full board of finance. I'd really like to get a better understanding of the whole process of the pink voucher. How it comes into being, who starts it, who approves it. And so I can understand why it misses purchasing and how that can get reconciled better into the whole payment process.
Um. Yes, I'll, I'll give you a, I'll give you an update on the pink vouchers.
Yeah, even, even the dollar vo, Connie, you, I know you usually do this anyway as part of your reports. But like the dollar volume that's going through those pink vouchers, that would also be illuminating. In addition to everything Mary said, you know, what does the process look like and, and how much money are we talking about?
Because that goes back to the DPW audit, that was one of the things that had been pointed out to us. Is that there were things that should have been bid that were going, were skipping through the process. Because they were coming in piecemeal through small vouchers. Um so we want to make sure that's not happening.
Yeah, I can uh talk, speak to the pink voucher process. Um there definitely are controls surrounding the pink voucher. Basically, everything goes, is required to go through a purchase requisition slash purchase order. The pink voucher is only supposed to be for small, you know, reimbursements and things like that. Um and at year end, if uh for closing out the books and things like that. Sometimes uh the pink voucher is used to expedite payments, but other than that, um everything should go through purchase requisition, purchase order. But I'll, I'll give you a, a better, um, you know, update and explanation, I'll, I'll give you a copy of the uh policy and procedures and so on.
That would be perfect, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
No, uh I think we're good. I think the next one's.
Yes, then the next one is audit uh inventory of town vehicles by department. And compliance with the town vehicle policy. Purpose of this audit was to provide management, specifically the first selectman and the assistant director of human resources. With an updated comprehensive list of town vehicles by department, including employees who are assigned to use those vehicles on a daily basis. The audit also provided management with a comprehensive list of all town employees who have the privilege of twenty four hour take home use of town vehicles. The audit was also conducted to ensure that town employees are complying with adopted town policy governing vehicles. It was noted during the audit that town risk man, the town risk manager has the responsibility of administering. And overseeing employee town vehicle assignments and compliance to the town policy. It should be noted that a dedicated full-time risk management position has not been reinstated in the budget by the town. The roles and responsibilities of this position have been assumed, assumed by the assistant director of human resources. The town should consider how to address this gap. Internal audit identified a hundred and forty four non-uniformed town employees who are authorized to drive town vehicles. Not including part-time. It is recommended that the assistant director of human resources review this list. Final approval of the list by the first selectman to determine the actual need and reasonableness of the number of non-uniformed town employees. Authorized to use town vehicles for work purposes. Various non-compliance to town policy guidelines were also noted during the audit. Such as no written request authorizing employee use of town vehicles from the department head was present. No written criteria for department need for employees to drive town vehicles documented. Not all employees submitted the signed memorandum of understanding from the town policy document. Or copies of driver's licenses of the employee present. Additional, it was noted that thirty vehicles are shared by eighty eight employees within town departments. And not all signed memorandum of understanding documents or copies of driver's licenses were present for these individuals. These annual employees are also allowed to drive town vehicles. But do not receive the town vehicle policy or sign the memorandum of understanding document from the town policy. It was recommended that all employees who use town vehicles comply with the terms of the town vehicle policy. This includes supplying the assistant director of human resources with the department head justification. Surrounding each employee's use of town vehicles, a signed memorandum of understanding document from each employee. Along with a copy of the employee's driver's license. It was noted that six out of eleven non-uniformed employees who were assigned twenty four hour take home use of town vehicles. Did not have the proper taxable fringe benefit applied to their wages. Making it subject to income tax as required by IRS guidelines. Further, only fifty six out of a hundred and ninety one town vehicles are equipped with GPS tracking devices. GPS tracking reports are not printed, however, these vehicles may be tracked during business hours for work-related purposes. Via computer monitoring by department heads. None of the new electric vehicles are GPS tracked, even though they have the capability of being shared by forty town employees. From an operational and employee safety perspective, such as severe weather or other emergency related events. It's recommended that all town vehicles be equipped with GPS devices, so they may be properly tracked and monitored. It is recommended that the town vehicle policy be posted on both the town share drive and on the town website under human resources employee policies. This will provide employees with ease of look up regarding the procedural guidelines governing town vehicles. Further, there are no motor vehicle background checks conducted on town employees or fire personnel who drive town vehicles. Formal policies governing the physical security and access of town vehicle keys. And formal sign out procedures other than the pool cars does not exist and should also be established. Do you have any questions on this?
That's my, I don't know where to start, I mean, I guess the question is, is a general, what? What are we doing to try to correct all these things? I mean, I, I take it Bill and David, you, you see there's issues here, what's, what's going on to address this?
Yeah, was there, did I miss it? I didn't see management's response in here.
Yeah.
Did we?
No, uh like, I don't have one at this time.
Okay.
A written response, let's put it that way.
Yeah. Do you want to go first?
I mean, I can go first. Um so this audit, first of all, Connie did an amazing job with this audit, I, I didn't know what to expect. Um she was really like a detective on this, she had to track down, there was no real comprehensive list. And she had to track all this stuff down and talk to people who, um you know, sometimes were a little reticent. So, um and the purpose of asking her to do it was because we were, were not comfortable. That, that we knew how many there were and who had them and why they had them. Um and so, um, yeah, so this is our list now to now go and try to figure out how to deal with it. And um it's complicated, I think, because um some of these cars have been, you know, promised to people. For reasons we're not quite sure of, and there's a lack of consistency in the rationale. And um over time, we, we do need to get control of this.
So just, that, that, and I, I just want to make clear, so the public understands that this, Connie's report. You stated August thirty of the twenty twenty four, so you just literally received this, right?
Um, no, so on my end, and, and if I could just throw my sort of perspective on it, so there was a, you know. So there was a draft version that um, that I had earlier, I think that was around, the one I'm looking at, that copy was May third. So it obviously got finalized recently, um so. And, and, and I want to point out, I mean, sure in the screen, but if you were to go page by page. I've got notations everywhere on, on, you know, most pages and recommendations and whatnot. Connie and I did sit down recently, right before um finalizing it um in preparation for this meeting. To fi- to, to, to finalize it, um I typically don't, um, y- y- you know, well, most have been prior to us. This is largely prior to us, but now under our window and us to try to address. Um I did um add a few different places, I, I had asked, you know, I made suggestions to her. On, I'm more so to strengthen or to notate, you know, you know, you know, so some background that, that I had had on some of it. And, and only making the audit stronger, never, I would never, the other direction, right, trying to enhance it. Um and, and mostly to help us have a little bit more teeth as we move forward. In these sort of notes that I have page by page, recommendation as I start to kind of, in my draft of this sort of look at going forward, what to do. Um there's sort of a two, you know, there's a two or three fold piece here. So one of them is the, the, who has what and what their, you know, whether they should or, or shouldn't. E- either in a contract or a function, I mean, and I think we found it's mismatched in some, so we have some people who, who don't, who probably actually might be helpful. Um that's a small number, and then we have a, a number of people with a sort of a hodgepodge of things where. I, I can't even point to the last time somebody probably actually used it in whatever version of, of, you know, take home. Or, 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 or whatever that they have, and then we've got, um, you know, and, 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 or an agreement towards it. Then we have the other half of it, which is, we've got all sorts of policy issues that are, that are, that are, you know, liability. Um for us and, and, and concern, I mean, and, and that's sort of a, you know, I've got my notations as systems based. So one of them is, you know, we need to, we need to very, I mean, I don't want to go down the road of a spreadsheet, I like to go down the road of a system. That actually prompts us when, you know, someone needs their annual, you know, their, their license expires and you copy on file, things like that. But we don't even have across the board, everybody putting their license on file, end of story, which is a pretty common thing, right? We don't have a, everybody gets a refresh on the towns, um, you know, um, you know, uh, once a year, they get a quick. You know, even if it's, it's in front of them and they have to sign, you know, sign off digitally that they at least reviewed a policy, we don't have that. Same with the GPS, so then we've got an issue when it comes to the GPSs, now the fire. And PD are a little bit different, PD, um but, but, but it still doesn't, it only, it, you know. So, so an answer that Connie got back was, you know, police vehicles, their MDTs have a tracking element. However, there's an element where, you know, admin vehicles, if they're not then tracked in another form, they're, they're not all tracked, right? So you don't have a hundred percent of the fleet, um which also is a safety issue, we send somebody out, even if they're higher ranking and they go onto the field for something and something happens. We don't even know whether they're on the board, right? So then the fire department, the answer was, we do it on the iPads, well, yes and no. So again, not on, not on admin or higher ranking, some of them carry iPads, although, you know, I, like, I, I, you know, a, an example would be. That some of them, they, they have the ability to log in and do a tracking piece within it, they have to actually do that step, the iPad has to actually be in the vehicle. At all times and doing that, and I could get into some technical reasons, but that doesn't fully apply. Then you get into DPW, so then, so I think of it also like from, from, you know, and I think everybody knows I'm, I'm involved in the public safety. Space, um, emergency management and whatnot, and, you know, when I look at that, I say, what I'd love to see is a board. You know, in an EOC where we can see everybody and we can see the layers, or we can turn toggle things on and off. We don't have everything even funneling into a universal system and we don't have everything tracked, so it's all good until five, you know, five supervisor vehicles go on the road. And they don't have a tracking element or they're in a completely different system. And then what, just from a private sector piece, most of these older systems, they're typically antiquated in the way, so they've been, if you have a tracking unit that's been sitting in for probably five, six years. Most likely, it costs us more money than it should and it's not doing the type of tracking that nowadays it does, nor is it probably having an API to connect in the way you want. So, you know, that's kind of a highlight, there's more notes, there's a whole piece about, you know, like, I, you know, just knowing even on risk. Um having a lot of these inform, pieces, I don't know the answer with our carrier, um it's something that we want to review. But my, my inclination is if we were running reports on all of our drivers and we had parameters clearly, whether they could or couldn't drive the vehicle. When you're documenting these, you know, typical DMV type report on an annual basis and we certify that with the carrier. Usually you get some sort of a discount or you at least don't get higher rates. I could, for, for whatever reason, the town maybe not have that problem, but I have an inclination. I could, for, for whatever reason, the town maybe not have that problem, but I have an incline that we're either certifying something that's happening. Or we aren't asking for what our, you know, package discounts could be if we do some of these things. So. There's a lot in this. Um, and I actually spent almost a month, kind of week by week, taking sections for a few hours at a time. Kind of parsing through and making notes on what to do and then waiting to get to go to final. And I think over the next few months, we're gonna be looking at putting a lot of different systems and things like that in place. I'll stop.
Laurie, Laurie or Mary, you have anything? I mean. Obviously, in three or four months, we're gonna need a follow-up and see where we are with it.
Just to clarify though, David, are you the owner of, like, who's, who owns? This, are we, is it, there was one. Um, comment in here about, you know, reconsidering the town's resource. Resource requirements around a mi- a risk manager, et cetera. And I know that the first selectmen has talked about that, um, in the past. Um, the area of, of risk management in general. So I guess, what, what should we expect? Is there a, do you have a timeline in mind or, or who, who owns this?
Can I, well, I just wanna make sure that it's clear, at least in my opinion. The problem we have now is that nobody own this, that, that. Different departments struck different deals with their employees for different reasons. And so what Connie helped us do was pull it together so that now we have global, you know, the, an overall view of it. I'm not sure, um, we've assigned this. I, I definitely, risk management is a piece of it. But there's a big piece of it that is human resources because, um, we need to be able to say no to people. Uh, even if they come and say, well, so-and-so has a car and I'm doing the same type of thing as him, like. There, there, I think we've just gotten, um, to. I, I don't, you know, I don't know how we stack up against other towns, but it, it seems like it's been. Um, a little too lenient and a little too like haphazard how these decisions were made and maybe sometimes. Really just based on like a negotiation with someone who we're trying to get to come to the town and, um. So we need to create some hard and fast rules. So part of it's HR.
Yeah.
Part of it's risk management, and then part of it will be operations or some form of operations, just tracking the, these things.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, it's, it's right. To, to some degree, it's three-part, uh, right? It's, it's the, it's the, the. The vehicles issuance piece, to Bill's point about, you know, HR, there's a risk, which is a lot of the, the policy, the, the tracking of the. ID sign-offs, policies, things like that. Um, and then there's, there's, there's a systems piece that maybe supports some of it, but it's also you're getting to the GPS and. Um, and maybe even just systems to help all of them with their pieces to stay on track. Because Connie pulled it all together, that's only valid for so long before this, you know, immediately starts to become, you know, stale. So if you don't at least cen- centralize sort of the, you know, that element of it and add something to it, which is showing systems. But I think Bill's right. It's like, it's. It's a few different chunks of it, um, that, that need to come together. And I do think, John, in a few months. I mean, we had, I think getting past the summer now and, and, and into the fall, this is becoming, you know. Something that's coming back into focus now that it's finalized.
So, what I, I think maybe a, a spring audit committee meeting, we could look at this again and maybe get an update. That gives you plenty of time. Before you know, we're gonna be in a budget season and let's just. You know, maybe that'll be our last audit meeting in the spring. We'll see if we can get an update. I'll figure it out. All right, I, I would like, I mean, we can stay for a while. I would like to try to finish this up by eight-thirty. Uh, any other questions on this? And maybe like a just, um, Laurie, I don't know if you had any other questions on just, um. Discussion on future audit plans. That, that's an agenda, part of the agenda. I guess it's a question for Connie. Connie, what do you have in the, uh?
Can I just, John, would it be okay? Yeah, I just wanna summarize our follow-ups just so we don't lose track of them. And I don't know if maybe Connie can take notes too, but. So the follow-up items we asked for, um. For the police department overtime, just to follow up to understand whether we looked more globally at the, uh. At the errors that were identified in payroll, um, versus just the ones that were identified in the audit. Um, following up to understand the root cause of those, uh. Rate input errors so that we can make sure we get that right in Paycom. Uh, we talked about a pink voucher, um. Review, understanding what's happening there and, uh, the magnitude of those and how they're being managed, et cetera. Um, an updated management response on credit card. Um, and ma- a management response on the vehicle audit. Um. And then, um, that's all I had there. But I, I did have one question on, you know, maybe Connie can talk about her future plans for internal audits. But I, I did have one broad question there around Board of Education, but maybe she can tell us what she's. Got on her, uh, upcoming agenda and then I can ask my question.
Okay, um, yes, so the audit plan for the remaining calendar year, twenty twenty-four, will include. Closeout draft reports of audits conducted and completed with the interim chief fiscal officer. And one of them, John, which I think you would be interested in, is a review of H. Smith Richardson golf course tee time scheduling. So, uh, that one, uh, was just completed. It's in drafts and waiting to be stamped final. Um, future audits that I'd like to conduct for the remainder of the calendar year, twenty twenty-four. And also into calendar twenty twenty-five are. Human resources audit of employees who participated in a money purchase plan and trust, a four oh one A plan. Then this re- um, audit was requested by human resources. An audit of the library revolving fund checking account. An audit of conservation department, collection of customer performance bond payments and associated bond releases. I'd like to do another, um, police department overtime audit of just general overtime. Uh, I wanted to take a look at audit of departmental fees and professional services expense. And of course, now with the implementation of the new Paycom payroll system. There will be future payroll audits and reviews of internal controls related to this new system. I would also like to focus on follow-up of past audits. Uh, conducted for departmental adherence to audit recommendations. And, um, obviously areas that, that the town would consider great risk. Uh, have been audited and that would be the tax collector revenue audit, solid waste and recycling transfer station audit. The review of the, uh, contracted property services and bids. Fire department overtime, uh, this report is currently in draft. And police department outside services overtime. And of course, if the first selectmen, CFO or the audit subcommittee have more pressing audits or projects. Or feel that another area of greater significance should be reviewed, uh, then that work would take precedence. Over the initial audit plan and I'm happy to look at any other areas that, um, you think, uh. Need to be looked at and, uh, need to be addressed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Laurie, you have anything? Mary?
Yeah, that, what I was gonna say is, um, just a broad question. It has to do with the Board of Education. Um, Connie, you historically, and I know you, you also had a, a colleague. I think we had two internal auditors at one point in the past. Um, what's the history of doing, uh, internal audits at the Board of Education, if any?
Well, in my experience, uh, and I've been here since dinosaurs roamed the earth. Uh, with the town of Fairfield, uh, historically, internal audit. Haven't really done any auditing over at the Board of Education. However, it certainly can be done. Um. If, if that's something that would interest the audit subcommittee.
I mean, the reason I raise this is, uh, you know, and I don't, I don't know about other towns. I remember. Um, also back when dinosaurs roamed the earth, um, the town of Greenwich used to be a client of mine and, and I know that they. Uh, their internal audit group, uh, absolutely did audits of the Board of Education, various things. Individual grants and other things. And the reason it came to mind, to be honest, was all these payroll issues, um. We've, we've obviously experienced a lot of challenges around our payroll system and processing at the town. There've been a lot of errors, which I think everybody has acknowledged. Um, and, and there's complications, but I, I don't. I've never quite understood what the difference is between the town and the Board of Ed. Uh, they certainly, not only are they much larger in terms of number of employees. But they have all the same complicating factors that the town does. They have union contracts, more than one. They have part-time employees, they have seasonal employees, um. You know, and everything else that goes along with it. And, you know, maybe, maybe it's smooth sailing. They use Munis, which we've had tons of challenges with. So I guess, you know, either they've, they've figured out something that the town hasn't and everything's smooth sailing. Or we just don't hear about it. But I, you know, I, I feel like that's a real opportunity, particularly if, if we, um. You know, as we go forward and implement Paycom. It doesn't make sense to me that we would have multiple, you know, a different system at the Board of Ed. So. That's just one area that I thought of, but just broadly. Um, and I appreciate these other things, but when I think of things that you mentioned, like maybe a library revolving fund or something like that. It, it just always strikes me that at Board of Ed, that's, you know, two-thirds of our budget. And all the, you know, the, all the good work you do, um. Your findings are always substantive, uh. There's, you know, always risks identified and we just don't touch. That part of the town. And I, I, I really think that, um, you know, I don't know what anybody else's view is. But I, I feel like from, you know, if we're gonna do a risk-based, uh, um. Audit plan, it, it, the Board of Ed has to be part of that because just by definition, that's where the dollars are, so.
You know, I, I agree a hundred percent.
I certainly, uh, I will add Board of Education, uh, payroll audit to the audit list, the audit plan. And, um, you'll be seeing a report in the near future.
There you go. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the other thing, we, um, we tossed around a li- and this may not be appropriate, cause I know for now. Because I know the administration is looking into some things and, you know, I don't know what our, our rights and obligations are. But, um, we did talk about the parking authority briefly, and I know they used to have a separate audit before they got pulled into the town's. Financial statements and reporting entity, but, um. You know, that was just another one that, um, I don't know if we've ever done an internal audit of that around, you know, their, their revenue. Um, but if, if that's appropriate, it may just be something that could be considered. Um, you know, now you no longer have a separate audit. Again, I, I think there's probably some work that has to be. There's, I know there's some research that's, that's going on right now around that whole structure, but, um, just another thought.
Okay. Yes, I certainly can take a look at parking authority.
Perfect. All right, Connie, thanks for your time and effort. This is great.
You're welcome. Sorry, sorry, we had a few glitches in the beginning and. But, uh, that's all right. The telephone worked and we were able to continue with the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to item three, update on town payroll issues and status. Uh, I guess is that David and Bill, you're gonna give us an update on the town payroll issues, status, what's going on with that?
I mean, they'll start.
Yeah, I, I can start. I mean, we are, um. Deep into implementation already. Uh, we just had a, an update a couple of, um. Days ago from Peter Ritchie that, um, I think, you know, the files have been uploaded. In the new system and they're just working through, um. You know, they're working through, um, you know, individual, um, issues, but, um. They're, they're well into it. I don't, I don't really, you know, have a ton of detail. I don't know if you have more. Detail on what they're working on today, but they've, you know, they, they've transferred the files and they're working through the contracts. They have all the contracts and entering, um, you know, all the details like the steps and the, um. Um, contractual, um, it, you know, um. Um, you know, like, um, um, degree bumps and all that and shit, you know, differentials and all that. They're just in the process doing it. We haven't done test, uh, a test run yet, but their tar- target is to have payroll. Um, working by the first week of October through Paycom. So.
Do you have a plan to run parallel with, um, for the first cycle or two to?
I, I don't know, I, I don't know how they're gonna do it. I know they're gonna do test runs. But I don't know what, how they would run. And you mean, you mean run, um, parallel, run with, um, the old system and just compare to the new system?
Yeah.
I would hope they would do that before they go live, but I think their plan is to, um. Actually be using the Paycom system. It's aggressive, but by, really by this time next month. They, they think we can be like using the Paycom system. That's the target.
That would involve training for all the employees as well, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, it seems aggressive to me, but.
Yeah, I think that's, that's their timeline. I, 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 yeah, I personally think it's a, a little bit aggressive. Cause to Laurie's point, you're gonna wanna run. The, probably, uh, you know, several rounds parallel and, um, you know, we have, um. You know, weekly and bi-weekly and, you know, so there's a few different, different, you know, pieces there you might wanna get right. Um, but I do, I do sort of, to some degree, stand by at least, um, the attempt to be aggressive with the timeline. Because if you set it somewhere else, it'll probably fall, you know, even further back. So. Let them keep doing everything to be full steam ahead. And if they've gotta delay it out by a few weeks to run parallel or to work out some training pieces. You know, that, that, that's, you know, this is a major, it's a major thing and it's, it's a, um. Probably one of the larger system items that, you know, to come online like this. I mean, affecting that many departments. I'm like the biggest and probably the newest, um. Implementation. So it's, it's certainly, you know, not on that scale, but, but, but substantial. So, um, I do know, I have, and I've, you know, and, and, and I know the controllers brought that up a couple of times and, and, and. And the payroll folks, you know, just reminding like, payroll a few times being a, being a good idea, so. But I think, you know, what I'm keeping, you know, the, 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 you know, everyone's been meeting frequently and a lot of information going back and forth between both departments.
And will Connie, um. Does Connie have some involvement kind of from the process and control standpoint? One of the things I was thinking about was, uh. The audit, it wasn't an audit, the review, I guess, payroll review that was done by our auditors. Um, laid out a bunch of recommendations that would have been applicable if we stayed with Munis, but from a. Kind of a process and control standpoint, uh, many are still applicable regardless of what kind of system we're in. And, um, one of the things when we had the DPW audit that we, that we tried to do, it was. Easier, uh, easier in theory than in practice was to make sure the new purchasing policy actually addressed all those shortcomings. And so similarly with this, you know, we got, obviously, everyone wants to make sure that the new system is going to address. Any control issues that were identified in the old system. So, um, I'm just, uh, wondering how, you know, how we look at that or how, how the town is planning to look at that.
Well, they have, um, Paycom has the review, um, but in term, but about how. How that, um. We make sure that the issues are properly resolved in Paycom. That's a good idea to get Connie, um. In, involved in that process, definitely.
Yes. Have a response, right? Cause we're not really responding to that report because we're changing systems, but I think still. The response to each one of his findings should be addressed in the Paycom implementation, so.
Yeah.
So the reports, yeah, so just, just, you know, I, on that, on that one, they, they, this has been sent to. Paycom as well, saying here's, here's items and we wanna make sure that it's, um. That it's, that it's being addressed. That was something HR did very early on. Um, since you've got these things, you wouldn't wanna put a system in without trying to address as many of those things at that system. So, so that has been sent over, um, and, um, I think that there's. I mean, we could figure out, you know, what. I mean, we could figure out, you know, what the, um. You know, what the role is for Connie to, to, you know, to maybe do something to audit and evaluate, um, all of these items. You know, sort of being remedied or anything that isn't Paycom fixed, therefore, you know, still outstanding, um. But, um, you know, there's, there's definitely, I mean, there's deficiencies between, you know. Two different departments, a bunch of different areas, and then including not just those two main departments, but outside of it, and that, you know, the. All of this is sent to Paycom, so.
Good. Well, looking forward to that. Anybody else have anything else? All right, everyone, thank you, I guess, last item is a, item four, motion to adjourn. Ms. Charlton seconded by Ms. McClure, all in favor, raise their hands. Thank you for coming tonight, everyone, and we'll see you really soon, appreciate.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Connie.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.